So we couldn't prove it is retroactive until last week?
No, we want another ninety days from August twelfth.
Who's that?
The first ninety days we extend. He wants the one ninety day extension. He got their approval on three thirteen. They have ninety days. And they're requesting another ninety days.
What's that, hundred eighty days?
No, so they're asking for one extension, ninety days of August twelfth. And they want a second extension from August twelfth. And based on the letter.
I can explain it when you call the agenda.
Right. Everybody seems confused. I think that's what you want.
Okay, um, who's here?
Yes.
Suzanne, right? Are we off the running? Okay, Suzanne, ready to start?
Yes, we're ready to start.
Okay, good evening, everybody. I will call this meeting's order. It is seven oh three P M. If I will please rise to the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic which stands in law. If you have one, you find your seats.
Member DeBolt, Chairman Freeland.
Here.
Member Cornelius.
Here.
Member Lea.
Yeah.
Member Gruberger.
Yeah.
Member Glover.
Yes.
And Huck member, please. Um, there's the minutes from the last meeting and I made two errors that I have to correct, which I will correct, putting Allen as acting chairman and you as option chairman. Other than that, I need a motion and a second, please.
Okay. So I'll make the motion to approve the minutes with the changes that Suzanne just mentioned.
I'll second.
All favor. Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, so item number five on the agenda, I will make the motion to adjourn the continuing public hearing for Benoskine at fifty-one Church Road to the two dates, September sixteenth, planning board meeting pursuant to the letter, email from Ira Manuel, if I have the right one here, yeah?
Yes.
Dated August sixth, two thousand twenty-five. Have a second?
I'll second.
All favor?
Aye.
Aye. And, okay, item number six, Mr. Brown, Moncar School wants a one more ninety day extension. I just want, so if I understand this correctly, the site plan comes with a hundred eighty days to expiration. Now that expired already, no, it was twelfth.
Yes, technically.
So you want us to add another ninety days retroactively to last week?
Correct.
And that's okay?
Yeah, we call it Monco Pumped. Now for them.
Laughing?
Yeah.
Everybody sees two names, so, okay. I have a problem with that, you have a problem with that? So what, the site plan, just, are you still on C D R C?
No, we went to the C D R C, we're waiting for reviews from Fusco Engineering or Mike and Tully, I'm not sure who's reviewing it, but we're waiting for their comments.
Okay, so I'll make the motion to grant the extension, the ninety day extension, which will run from August twelfth to November twelfth, some point, whatever twelfth, whatever it is.
Ninety days.
Ninety days from August twelfth. Uh, have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Next up, I'll make the motion to continue the public hearing for Shul and Shik at two forty-five Cherry Lane. Have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, okay, Mr. Brown, it's you.
That is me. Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Rachel Baris is the project engineer is with me. So this is an application for freestanding place of worship under ten thousand square feet. It's right down the block here on Cherry Lane, at the corner of Blossom Road. We have been before you before, we're looking for two waivers, one on the parking and one on the development coverage. We went to the zoning board of appeals last week, they granted the single variants that we needed for the front yard of five point seven feet to the parking lot, and they hit your requests. They, one, they wanted us to add a sidewalk along Cherry Lane, the applicant had agreed to do that. And the other request was they want a, I guess, a request sent to the village board to consider no parking signs on Blossom so that cars don't overflow and park on Blossom. If you recall, we did increase the number of parking spaces at the board's request from twenty-four to twenty-eight. And we did a, Ron Reiman from Collier's Engineering did a parking analysis on two nights and determined there was adequate parking, so the twenty-eight spaces we're providing should be adequate for the needs of the synagogue and shouldn't have any overflow of parking, but we'll leave it to the village board to decide if they want to put no parking signs.
So that request was sent to the board?
I don't know what the zoning board has done, that was just last week.
The zoning board sent, the zoning board sent the request to the board of these?
Yes, I have it verbally because we haven't done anything with the resolution yet. But those were the two items, if Paul didn't bring it up, I was going to bring it up.
And the only thing I was just going to add about the sidewalks, I don't even know if it's worth mentioning, but, you know, I looked up and down Cherry Lane, there's really no sidewalks in the area, so you're going to have this one little stretch of sidewalks. You really can't continue it south, there's a rock wall. You can't continue it north. Maybe long-term planning, maybe sidewalks might be on the other side of the street instead of this side of the street. I would hate to put a sidewalk in here on this frontage and then the board decide, you know what, on Cherry Lane, we're going to put sidewalks on the other side of the street and this is going to be one little.
Well, we'll be sidewalks on that side, of course, for U T A, right?
For certainly U T A.
Yeah.
And the, and the local put sidewalks on, and the school next door is putting sidewalks. So except for Village Hall and a few houses, we should have it covered.
Village Hall, one day?
So cement sidewalk? I've seen a asphalt.
Concrete, yeah.
Yeah, not, not the macadam paved ones.
No, they put, they put basically driveway, you know, stuff along M E N road. Not cement.
They put up crackment, too.
Oh, yeah, the little black.
Crackment all the way up, that's it.
Okay, did you, I'm just, I'm curious, Mr. Brown, did you voice his objections to the zoning board or?
No, no, I just thought about it after they said it and my client said, yeah, fine, no problem. I went and I just looked on Google Maps and went down Cherry Lane and just say, does it make sense to put it here, maybe it makes sense on the other side, who knows? He agreed to do it and we will amend the plan accordingly when we submit.
Makes sense, that's what people do, actually, all the sidewalks.
So we've responded to all the outstanding comments from the reviewing agencies and Fusco Engineering, we have no problems with any of that. We're not asking for any overrides from the general municipal laws recommendation. So we're here tonight hoping that we can get the board's approval of the site plan.
Okay, and the neged act for seeker was any, you said you got your variants?
Yeah, the neged act was done, I think I can shoot him.
Okay. Did anybody sign the speaker's application?
No, we did not.
Oh, wow. Okay, so, yeah, so I'll make the motion to open the public comment section of the public hearing.
I'll second.
All favor?
Aye.
And I'll make the motion to open the public comment section of the public hearing. All favor?
Aye.
Okay, that takes care of that. Anything you want to pursue with this application that we haven't yet? Parking? The sidewalks, the sidewalks will be in the plan.
The sidewalks, yes, it's a requirement of the Z B A, we agreed, so the board approved it tonight. When we submit for check print, we'll show the sidewalks for the, for the village's professional study here.
We just didn't make the plans, just submit since it was the end of last week and nobody would have had time to look at them, so. It's a minor change, so.
Excuse me, the plan set dated July, last revised July twenty-eighth does not include the sidewalks?
No.
No, this was just discussed last year.
Like, last week.
Yeah, that's right.
So. But I, it seemed like it was a minor enough change, like it didn't change the intent of the plan where you could just picture what it will look like when we add them.
And it was discussed at A R C last night when they went, and it is in the minutes that they, without the sidewalks, that they agreed to it, but it wasn't in the renderings because they were submitted before the Z B A.
And the A R C was okay with the general?
Yes, so your memo is there.
Okay.
I just provided A R C approved. The only thing that they asked for was that the garbage container be enclosed, have an enclosure.
So it's all in, all the way in the front?
Yeah, it's not in the front on Cherry Lane, it's in the back of the parking lot.
Oh, yeah?
I attached the pictures so you can see. So you could see what they approved.
So just, Ms. Baris, the addition of the sidewalks, won't affect the parking at all?
No, no, because all your parking is on the property. The sidewalks are going to be in the right of way because they're public sidewalks, so anybody can, anybody can use them.
The new driveway off Blossom, it doesn't look like they have any maneuverability from here, not pulling out. They pull from within there, it looks like it's.
So I can extend that backup if it will.
Sure.
Yeah, that's fine.
It's going to be on.
Okay.
Where's the additional factors, Ms. Baris?
So, the plan that the firm started with. So it went to here, we then extended and we are closer in the front here, so we were able to fit additional parking. These two, there was, originally we had, we were going to keep this curb cut and put the two spaces for the house here. The county did not want to have that second curb cut, so we put it off of Blossom, which is a local road, and it's only going to be the two spaces for the residence because based on your code, you have two spaces for the residence and then the rest was for the residence.
So how many in total parking will leave just for the synagogue?
You have twenty-six for the synagogue and two for the, for the residence. So you have a total of twenty-eight, which is, because you're required, is twenty-eight for the house of worship and then plus the two for the house, so you need thirty total. We're providing twenty-eight. So we're short by two.
We're asking for a waiver for those two, two spaces.
So we're ninety-three point three percent compliant for the parking.
And that's including the handicap one?
Yeah, the handicap space still counts as a space. The striped aisle doesn't count because that's not a space, but the handicap space is a space, so it counts.
Okay, anything outstanding on the, what's going on here?
I just think that you did, the other parking spaces really increased the retaining wall at the rear of the property. Might be a little bit more cost, but we probably could get it, but it seems like it, I don't know what the size of retaining wall is now, it's about five foot.
Yeah, so every, every time it would go back, it's going to go up considerably because it's, that's where it starts to, the slope starts to pick up there, that's why we opted not to. The traffic report, the parking analysis showed that they didn't need even close to this amount of parking. Yeah, so that was why we decided that we didn't think that the benefit was worth it. We think that there is enough with this.
And because it's a steep slope, we'd have to start disturbing the slope and there's mature trees back there that provide a nice buffer and screen to the, to the parking lot and the house of worship and didn't want to try taking down all that natural buffer.
Okay, we, any comments?
No.
Mr. Brown, anything?
No, we've taken care of Zebra in the June twenty-sixth meeting. They got the variances, the items that we've discussed would make their way into conditions on the resolution.
Okay, you got sidewalk in the Z B A?
Compliant with the Z B A decision and those additional requirements. I have a list of all the correspondence.
Okay, so before we get to that?
Yeah.
Anything, it's a pretty small project, it's a lot of parking. Okay, so I think we're ready to vote, right? So, yeah, if you don't mind giving us a list of what will be included in the?
Sure, so this, Mr. Chairman, is based upon the application that was originally dated December twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-five. The last narrative was by Mr. Brown dated June second and narrated by Civil Tech dated March eighteenth, twenty twenty-five and June second, twenty twenty-five. They also provided a stormwater analysis last revised June, twenty twenty-five, short environmental assessment form dated December seventeenth, twenty twenty-five. And question about the heart and design plans, the operative date is still March fourth, there was no change to them?
You're asking me?
I was asking.
No, I'm not aware of any change to the, to the plans, no.
And the plan set that we're looking at is the site plan consisting of five sheets and that was last revised July twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five.
I think, actually, there's architectural plans, the last provision date that I see is May fifteenth.
The date stands for this.
But I don't know what they submitted, so go with whatever they submitted.
Okay.
Do these have, do these say eleven twelve, eleven twelve twenty-four?
Our design plans just happened to not have.
It says three, four, twenty-five revised this month, originally November twelfth.
I hope they have it back from our left for November.
So just continuing with the traffic impact study by Collier's dated June sixth, twenty twenty-five. Agency reviews are the G M L from Rockland County Planning dated May nineteenth, twenty twenty-five.
They're okay with that, right?
Letter from the Armont Fire Inspector dated April first, twenty twenty-five, letters from Tolman Fire Department dated April sixth and April ninth, letter from the Rockland County Sewer District dated May twenty-third, from the Remaco D P W dated June fourth, from the Health Department dated June twenty-third, on the traffic review memo from Nelson and Folk dated June twenty-third, twenty twenty-five, review memo from Fusco Engineering and Land Surveying dated April eighth and June twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five. So we would also include, in addition to the Z B A conditions, the A R C memo that was dated yesterday. And that's all I have.
Okay, so based on the list of conditions that was just referenced by Mr. Brown, ready to vote?
Yep.
What are we voting on?
We're voting on site plan approval and special permit and the, also the waivers.
Waivers, two, two waivers.
It's not a special permit, it's as a right because it's under ten thousand square feet.
The site plan approval and two waivers, you said, right? Parking?
Development coverage and parking, but development coverage is mandatory.
Okay, so.
As long as we have a proper plan.
Okay, so we'll make the motion for the site plan approval and the, and the two waivers. Have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That's it? Okay, we're done?
Thank you.
Okay. Now we're going to round to applause. He's your lawyer. Don't get paid. What? Do you want to give a speech?
No, I want to thank the board for approving this project, really appreciate it and hope to work together with the village.
Okay, listen, they thanked us by being good neighbors.
No more than twenty-eight cars.
Yeah, no, no baristas, yeah, no parking in the street. Okay, the next item on the agenda is manifestation astilla, Astilla, Two Beach Road. So I guess this is a new one, I'll make the motion to open the public hearing, manifestation astilla.
I'll second.
To Two Beach Road. We have a second from Higginson. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, okay, so this one sort of rings a bell. Who's here for this one, Mr. Brown?
I'm here for a workshop in April.
Ooh, Mr. Pekasodish, and Ms. Baris?
Yeah.
Okay, so it was here, but I don't remember, it was a lot of it.
So this is a proposed freestanding place of worship. There's an existing single-family home and they are proposing to put the addition off the back of the existing house. We are proposing to have parking come off of Smith Hill Road and then two spaces off of Beatrix. Primarily, this curb cut was so that we can get the, the handicap space, A D A space up here so that it can get into the building through this spot because I think everybody knows Smith Hill Road is on a hill and this parking lot will be lower than this building, so there's a staircase that comes up to get into the main entrance of the building. And so by putting the handicap space over here, they can go on the sidewalk, it's a shorter distance and there is no elevation change. The, there is an existing shed-type structure over here that is proposed to be used as a mikva for the house of worship.
So.
Shed or a house or permanent structure, what is that thing?
It's going to be a permanent structure, it's going to be a mikva for the worship.
Is it a permanent structure now?
Yes.
It's going to be connected, right?
It's going to be detached, it's part of the mikva.
So based on the size of the sanctuary, they would require fifty-four parking spaces and twenty-five are proposed, so a parking variance will be requested from the zoning board should we get through that point. The other variances that are requested is the lot area, that obviously is an existing condition, however, the change of use brings that up. We are requesting a variance for the front step back, but again, it is, these are existing conditions. For a variance for the front yard and that is to the parking. And the side step back, which is to the mikva building, and then a variance for the development coverage, which actually I think we can do that as a waiver, so I'll have to check on that. I think it's the same thing that we had on the last one where we can do a waiver when we provide the stormwater, but I will double check that. So, that is a quick overview, I mean, I have your questions.
We were here, we were here a couple months ago, we did a full presentation and the board just wanted to get a traffic study and a parking calculation based on the existing use, which we submitted from Collier's Engineering. Nelson and Folk came back with some questions, they responded and they had no additional numbers, they were okay with everything they were proposing. And five departments wanted to see the fire truck maneuverability on the parking lot on Smith Hill, even though it's not required for a fire accident, but it obviously is working, Rachel submitted that as well, so we submitted whatever was left open based on the last meeting.
How many condos do we have?
We have approximately forty-five families with.
Forty-five families. Hundred people, three hundred people, three million?
It's about a hundred, big kids, depending which weekend.
And how many people need to go park when they pray, whenever they cry?
So we don't have weekday services in the morning, we do have evening services during the summer period and that's when the traffic calculation is done. We typically don't exceed fifteen, eighteen cars during the weekday. And then on the, on the weekends, on Friday evening, shadows, no one drives, some people come with a car, they park there and they walk home and then they get it up, but we've never exceeded twenty, twenty-two cars and they've done their traffic parking without noise or none of that.
You think they're going to get more condos?
We're not going to need twenty-five more, we'll probably just fit in where. Any more shows here?
Any questions? Todd? Sorry.
I'll have.
What? What? Anybody sign up to speak for this one?
I have two people.
Okay. Shall we get them to come on a permit?
I guess the only other thing is there's some safety measures we're recommending.
There's some recommendations for Oscar we can implement, which is, you know, there is some vegetation along the road and everything, and there's some recommendations for the village, like additional signage or.
And you're going to tell them where they can.
I would say most apparently.
I didn't get a comment review from Tolman Fire Department on the survey analysis because the gentleman is away for two weeks, but I just had it last week.
This is somewhere from the background?
No.
And they're okay with it, right?
I didn't get a memo.
Oh, I think, so what did you get?
I'm sorry?
You said you got something today or yesterday?
I got, I got something today from the safety officer on forty-six Campbell, that he could not comment on to the site after, if he could.
We're still going to come back for finding, but Rachel has shown that it's working.
Yeah, so I was able to show that they can turn in and they can get out.
Okay, you need variances?
Yes.
So you still need a referral to Z B A?
Yes.
Yeah, so right now, the most that we could do tonight is seeker and referral to Z B A.
How many variances are there?
So we are seeking an area for the parking, the lot area, the front step back, front yard, side step back, and then I'm going to check, I think the development coverage is a waiver, the same as we had on the last one, so that would be fine.
But you just, you just repeat what you said, I'm sorry, after lot area, parking lot area?
So lot area, front step back, front yard, side step back, and then we'll, like, I think the development coverage is going to be the waiver, not the other areas.
Front yard is for the parking, right?
Front yard is for the parking.
You missed by a few inches.
The, the front step back is, but that's the existing building, but the, the parking is more than a few inches.
Front yard.
Front yard and front step back are different, the step back is to the structure, the yard is the parking, so.
Okay, so I'll make the motion to open up the public, the public comment, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, so, who wants to speak? Sign in.
The first person is Janet Genocchio, Isaiah, thank you.
Hi, thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. I've been a resident of Armont for life. What I would like to actually dispel right now is that the shed that I are calling is actually a running mikva. I apologize if I have said anything incorrectly. It has been, was constructed about two years ago. There are gentlemen that go in and out with their bag, with their towel, one mom who's ninety-six years old, owner of the home, she sits there at her front window having her coffee, she sharpens taffy, she can't hear too well. So, and you can see the steam coming out of the building, so it's not a shed that was constructed under six days, no permits, no nothing, it was just done. I don't care, okay, that's not my problem, but I just wanted to clarify that it is not a shed, it is a usable building that has been there for at least two years. The issue that I have, and I do not have a problem with the expansion of the synagogue? I never, I didn't exit a long time ago.
Same thing.
Okay, so I, I don't have any problem with that, especially if they're going out back, I don't have to see any monstrosity.
Yes, it's a joke, sorry, where do you live?
I live directly right across from number two.
So you live across from you?
I'm number three, yes. So my front window faces aspect, because they're kind of on an angle, but like, it faces the mikva, the fence, the side of the house.
And you're on the corner?
I'm not on the corner, no.
You're the second one?
No, I'm the second one in.
Okay, so that's.
I will have to tell also to dispel the gentleman that did the car traffic back when, in the dark of night, that came at three o'clock in the morning, he put the camera up and we know because my security cameras picked up on it. My neighbor was concerned because it was during some troubling times and we all look out for everybody in the community. She noticed a box and she didn't know what it was and she got concerned and she called the police. She saw a box affixed to something and honestly, if you look at this box, you would say, there's something suspicious about it. It really doesn't look very, you know. Within probably five, ten minutes, she called the police, five, ten minutes, the police got there, this man came rolling up already with answers and this and that. That box was removed, I would say, almost under twenty-four hours. That box was removed, I would say almost under twenty-four hours. Um, it just so happened that that day that the monitoring was going on, um, again, I, my security cameras pick up nine buses that go by from seven fifty-eight to nine oh seven, nine buses every morning. That miraculously didn't pick up any buses. Um, or the traffic, the taxis, a lot, a lot on, on, again. I go through batteries on my Ring camera so much because of its constantly recording. Um, I've moved it down so it doesn't get it, but it still does. Uh, so his, his traffic, safety, whatever you wanna call it, is not accurate. It was not done, uh, it was quiet and we all get made, but it's in the police report. You can actually have it looked up. I believe it was around June fourth, if I'm, I'm correct. So there was a police report filed on it because they had to come out and, you know, explain to it. They didn't even know what it was. We Googled it after a while because we made sure that the cops touched it. We didn't wanna touch it. Um, then he came and explained what it was.
You only get three minutes to speak.
Oh, I didn't know. All right, so let me just say one more, please, one more thing, please. The issue that I'm going to have with the parking in the front is I already have an issue. I've had the police at my house twice this week. The rabbi and I have been working, trying to work together. They block my driveway. Every time the congress, and it's generally people that are not from the area, they come, they block behind my driveway and it makes it very difficult for me to get out. The rabbi himself, Torski, has suggested and his wife to get culled. We have done that. I have not been nothing but harassed, threatened, which is on camera, any support, numerous things, because I do that, as of even last night. So I'm concerned about now, now parking spots, because two, it's gonna be twenty cars on one. Um, I know my time's up, but again, you can look up the police reports. There is numerous ones and again, they don't even listen to their own rabbi, which I find disrespectful. I really do. Um, and they, they park very erratic on the street. And then again, what I'm told, they're not from this area. They're congregants that are being invited, so they have no respect for the residents and for the people in the neighborhood.
Okay, thank you.
And the lights, okay, because that's the big issue. The light comes shining into my home.
Um, the next person is Janet Genakia. You have three minutes.
I'm her daughter. I'll speak more rationally than she will. Straight to the point, the issue we have is they have lights on the, the building. They are on twenty-four seven. Shines right into our house, can see it through our window. It can illuminate our living room. We don't even need a light on. We asked them to put it down. They did at one point. It's back where it was. It's just an eyesore. Don't know why it's so hard to just keep it within the property line. It shouldn't be going across the road onto someone else's property. The cars, there is more than fifteen cars that come in and out, not maybe on a daily basis, but when it comes to Fridays, oh yeah, there's a lot of cars. And there's a constant problem of trying to get out and parking. They'll, they have a back lot, barely used half the time. Don't know why, don't know why the lot's there if you're not gonna use it. They feel a need to park directly where across from our houses. The whole rest of the road's open, but no, that's where they wanna park. We were threatened actually last night about having our driveway blocked directly in front of the driveway by a congregant that will be there at eight forty-five PM, he said. He'll actually be coming there tonight. He said he'll continuously do it on purpose. When we were speaking to the rabbi's wife about solutions to not continue dealing because we don't wanna keep calling the cops. But we do because nothing else, no one's listening. They're not even listening to the rabbi and his wife. So the congregants are gonna just be harassing, then it's just gonna be, we're gonna have to keep calling cops. And it's annoying that people wanna talk about community, community, but they're so against working with the community that they're in. And the residents that live there. We don't go to there to worship or anything. We live there, you know, at least have respect and decency for the people in the area. And they don't. The speeding, the buses, the taxis, like you said, it's just, it's becoming way too much. It's not safe. We are very good friends with our neighbor next door. They go over and they worship there. We have their kids go across our lawn to go to her sister's house because it's not safe for them to cross the street on their own. And they both asked us if that was okay. That's to the point that it's up to. And that's all I have left to say.
Thank you.
Um, I have two more people.
Oh, yeah?
Is it Shay Bergen?
Hi, my name is Shay Bergen. I live right next door to them. Um, I've been having seen like people are not from the area that maybe make some issues. But I would highly believe that most of the congregants don't have any issues and try to basically obey and respect the neighbors. I totally understand my neighbors' concerns and I would also be upset if there would be any other religious group, any other type of community that would open up, make the street more busier. But I believe it's, uh, for the community has changed and the people that live there. And the neighbors have been great neighbors and they let our kids cross the lawn there, so they don't have to go on the street. But overall, I think it's a good idea to move the parking and I would like it actually to, so we have like, the congregation would have like twenty parking spots. I don't know exactly how much that is, so we'll be in the back and it wouldn't bother the beachers now, so I think that's even a better idea. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, Jacob Gutman?
Jacob Gutman, ninety-five Smithville Road. Um, I believe that we have a overwhelming majority of the community that supports this project. We have been asked not to put our names in to hold the board's time and anyone's time. So maybe if everyone that is here to support should just stand up for a minute or raise their hand so the board can see the support.
Thank you.
So why can't you guys support the neighbor and get the guy who's parking his car out from their driveway?
Oh, they do, no, I do have to say.
Oh, they do, okay.
No, there, there are some of them that actually step in for us. No, they do, they.
Probably a one or two isolated incidents.
Okay.
It's happened about thirty times.
The cones are there.
Thirty isolated.
We have police.
Thirty to two.
But no, no, the, the congregants do step in for us, they do.
Thirty to two.
Close it?
Yeah.
Okay, that's it, right, is that?
Yes.
Okay, I'll make the motion to close the public comment. I'll take it, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Is the rabbi, I hear this, Chaim Torski?
I'm sorry, he was on his way from Upstate and he was in Sturgis.
Oh, boy. But you talked to the rabbi, right? What time to turn his damn lights off?
Well, that will be part of the site plan.
Right, oh, but do it now. Be a good neighbor.
Lighting is part of the site plan, so.
Why does it have to be part of the site plan? Do it now.
You will.
All right. Before you come back, have it done. Start being a good neighbor now.
We want them coming back next month and supporting the project.
That's right.
Um, there's no parking, anybody parks on beach, I don't think.
Right now, everyone parks along Smithville, mainly on beaches. There is, the, the parking lot will be, on Smithville is right now, you know, there's little trees there, you could drive on, but it's not really usable.
And people don't park there now because of convenience?
It's, there's no curbs, you can't drive on, it's not even the route. It's not, it's not meant to, but some people get on there and park there. But as soon as the parking lot will be there, there should, shouldn't be any traffic on, on beaches.
Okay.
Just to clarify, the neighbor is talking about parking across her driveway, so they back out. So typically there's cones on there, I think four out of six nights during the week. I think, as you may have seen, two or three times incidents where someone got in there, but.
She said, well, okay, sounds like there, there's a problem.
Sometimes people aren't ignorant, sometimes it's a passerby that stops by for services and, uh, but we try to.
But if there is a, you know, some, one anguine, this turning member talking about this, you should, you should speak to him. Tom, there, you, what?
I have to find out.
Yes, I'll tell you. Maybe throw down your, uh, hand chip.
I think most of the other driveway, there shouldn't be much traffic on beaches.
He's almost raising his hand, so.
Is there any foot, pretty sidewalks between the two parking lots? Aaron? She's on your side, yeah.
What's, what's the suggestion?
Sidewalks.
Internal?
At, at least on the curve between the two parking lots.
Well, there is a sidewalk from the upper parking lot.
To the lower parking lot?
Not to the lower parking.
Yeah.
It's got stairs in it, doesn't it?
Yeah, well, it won't be, it won't meet EVA otherwise. The stairs is like.
Your elevation, your, like, did you see the elevation? Finished floor elevation, it showed six hundred, you're nine hundred touching there. It seems like there were data point steps for them. But if you look at your finished floor elevation at six hundred.
I'll check.
Yeah, check that because it does look like you're, it's a tough, I don't know if you're utilizing new structure as we change. Like all the elevations are, they're all, it's something.
Where do you see nine hundred?
I see six hundred one.
I see five ninety-two and then you finish, two story frame, well, you show six hundred oh nine, finish four, six hundred oh nine, right outside is five ninety-nine.
Yeah, and then, because they're not coming in over in that spot. And then the basement, it's gonna be like a high ceiling in the basement. For now, the basement is unfinished and before they would finish anything, they would, um, have to submit, yeah.
It's a little, it's a little, it's just utilizing whatever is still from five ninety-two.
Because it's like, the, the six hundred here.
Okay.
Yeah, we can, we can get more. But it's, um, we're keep, we're holding like a floor in the house to go across. So that's where that elevation comes from.
Okay, so I think what, uh, the first thing we have to do is we never did parasols in agency, right?
You can make a lead agency motion based on the fact that we did this, uh.
Oh, long time.
NOI has been out there for more than thirty days.
Okay, so first I'll do that. I'll make the motion that the, uh, timing boards and the parasol lead agency for the secret review process. Is there application? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and, um, Mr. Noble, do we have, um, all the secret reviews back in? Anything outstanding for secret? Does the fire, the fire department?
We have comments from the fire department and the fire inspector's office.
And those are, those are secret, are issues?
Yeah.
Okay.
But not on the turning radius. And, um, we don't have an engineering memo. And it looks like the other agency reviews, you have our Rockland County Sewer. You have, um, Nelson Pope. There were memos dated eight, six, and eight twelve. And there was something supplemental from Colliers as well. Rockland County Health Department dated April twenty-third, Sewer District dated, uh, May fifth, and the DPDW dated May twelfth. There's no GML on it.
No GML? You said there's no, there's nothing from, uh, FOSTCO?
The last one was from the, the workshop. That was in, uh, April.
So again, where are we up to with the, with the fire department? What's the, uh, the latest one is from?
The latest, uh, letter from the fire department is dated, uh, April nineteen.
April nineteen, that one?
April nineteen. But I'm told that they don't address the adequacy of the fire, uh, truck maneuverability.
Yeah, we got that last year.
It was, it was July eighth. Oh, it was July eighth. It was always thirty-eight.
Yeah.
Actually, yeah.
Yeah. Um, and then the letter from the fire inspector says he has no additional comments, so we do have that for your record.
Sorry?
There's a letter from your fire inspector dated April twenty-first that says he has no additional comments. So we had addressed his concerns, so.
Right.
You do, at least you have that for the record, even if it isn't the final time offer. Holman, but, um, at least you have something to back up.
So yeah, let's think of this, the, the fire department wants the turning radius?
Which we provided, they just haven't reviewed it yet.
They weren't looking for a turnaround. They wanted to make sure that the truck could get in and out of.
Like we could pull in and pull out.
Because of the slope of the road and the connection point of the driveway and all that, so that's why Rachel demonstrated that on the.
Did you demonstrate that with a profile or just?
No, we just did a turn, it wasn't really.
Profile, my key. Cause of like the truck.
Okay. Was there anything, um, in your original review from FOSTCO that, I can't find it here, so.
I, I didn't put the one from April in.
Okay, was there anything outstanding from that that, uh?
We'll have a review. We have the, the public presentation, so we will have a review.
I'm saying just for moving forward for secret, anything with, uh, with lighting, was that, is that just on the? Is that what I'm saying?
On the traffic study, how many days was the traffic study conducted for?
The details is in, the details is in the study. I'm not sure how many things they were out there.
I think I saw two when I was reading through it.
Is that here?
We used, we used the same engineer that did for.
He's right here.
It says that they collected the, uh, on.
How many days was the traffic study?
Yeah, I.
Yeah. How many days?
March eighteenth and June twenty-fourth.
How do you choose your days? Is it random?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Oh, yeah, sure.
I wasn't really invited to this thing.
Oh.
Well, we're gonna invite you.
There you go. I was, I was waiting for you to invite me. Ron Raymond, Colliers Engineering, the sign. So typically a traffic study, you know, count the typical day between, um, Monday and Thursday. Typically, you don't count on Friday. So we did one day of traffic counts for two of the intersections. And we were looking up the Smithville Road and, what is it, church? Church. And Smithville Road, we had data from a previous report, so Rachel, I give my notes. That was the earlier date. We did the traffic study. In order to do the traffic study, we typically do one day of counts, which is acceptable. And your traffic viewer, they do traffic studies, they do as well, they encounter them. But in this case, we did two days of studies, previous, accounting previous study and this count. So two days, basically.
Anything else? Is it okay with the negative?
Yeah, thank you, thanks.
I think it was also, what, hey, you come in?
Yeah, you can do that.
Okay, so, um, Mr. Noble, you have any objection to us, uh, voting on a negative act tonight?
Yeah, if you're satisfied and you've taken a hard look at the issues, um, that's the standard. Uh, board decides whether or not there's a negative environmental impact that even been dated here. So that's.
Right, you know, so, you know, traffic is always a big concern and, uh.
The memo that you have from, uh, MPB, which is labeled the final traffic review dated eight nineteen. Oh, that's, excuse me, that's, that's forty sixteen.
August sixth, that's this one?
August, August twelve. He's satisfied with the three comments that he raised issues on.
There's one August sixth and then there's a supplement. Cause they responded to their comments dated August five.
Looked like he was okay with the methodology and.
Final.
His, his, his three comments were addressed.
And then he put in some safety measures as, uh, he recommended if you decide to do safety measures.
Right. Okay. Okay, well, yeah, most of these are for the village, but the applicant included vegetation.
Yep, I understand.
Yeah? And give everybody a reflectus. Okay, that was about it. There's really not much else. Okay, you okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay, so, um, I will make the motion to, I guess, everyone's gonna, I'll make the motion to issue the negative declaration pursuant to the secret review process of the applicant.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right? And, um, yeah, we're gonna send it to the ZVA. I'll make the motion to refer the applicant to the zoning board. The zoning board? Have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
You have time for second round.
Thank you.
Okay, um, that's that. And when do you wanna come back here? And when do you want to come back here? Before you go?
Three minutes.
Uh, before you... Just an applicant, before you go. When do you want to come back?
Not in September.
Okay. What's the, uh...
I'm going to say I don't know what's gonna happen in October because I'm very late. Two babies in September might be adjournings or October, but I have not received anything for zoning, but...
Okay. We didn't submit for...
Zoning yet.
The zoning yet, so...
The earliest you could submit for is October sixteen.
Right. That's what we spoke last week. We said aim for October.
Sixteen?
Yeah.
Also Tuesday?
Yes. No, it's the third Thursday.
Thursday.
Yeah, but it's after the holidays.
I think the sixteenth was zoning.
The sixteenth is zoning. And so this would be the twenty-first. So let's pick October twenty-first.
So planning would be October twenty-first. It's a Tuesday. All the rest of the year are Tuesdays.
So this should be fine. I would celebrate this, make sure. October twenty-first. October twenty-first is a Tuesday. It's like a week after September. Okay.
Yeah.
Fine. So is that when you want to come back? If you know you're not coming back?
I will.
Speak as soon as possible.
We'll adjourn if we're not. Well, we are definitely not coming.
But for now, I will make the motion.
No, we're not coming in September. So October is the one we'll put for. And if we have to adjourn, we'll adjourn.
Okay. So I'll make the motion to adjourn the public hearing for... What is this congregation? I'll still attend to the H X Road. To the planning board meeting of Tuesday, October twenty-first. So a second?
On second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Was that Monica or Penny?
Penny.
Next up, um, who's here for, uh... Forty-six Campbell? Mr. Bowman, Mr. Grisia?
Mr. Reiman.
Okay. That's the...
I'm delighted with this one.
Okay. So, um, this is a new one. I mean, we've seen them, but this is the beginning of the first public hearing.
Yeah, but the reason was to try some publicity. I would hear you need.
You just have to figure who to pay.
Was that?
You just have to figure out who to bill. So I'll make the motion to open the public hearing for Sher Asmirium of Rockland County, Inc. at Forty-six Campbell Avenue. Another second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Eventually, we've seen this one already, but I guess as a workshop, this is the first public hearing. I think we did circulate the notice of intent, if I'm not mistaken. And that was more than thirty days ago. Yeah, I must have guessed because I wasn't here last month. Okay.
That's June twenty-sixth.
That was June twenty-sixth. Okay, yeah, a long time ago. Okay. So this was the girls' school across from the park, if I'm not mistaken?
Yes. Um, so just to recap, it is a, um... A school for girls ages thirteen to eighteen. Um, the applicant has purchased three parcels of property merged together to create a single lot of one hundred and sixteen thousand square feet. Um, there is an existing single-family home on the premises that will be maintained for caretaker's quarters. This is an R twenty-five zone and it's a special permit used in the zone. Uh, it's a three-story building. I should have... But if you look at it, it's not a full three-story. I think it's, you know, it's a basement and then, uh, a portion of it's one-story and another portion of it's two-story. Uh, last time we came in here, we had mistaken the square footage of the building as fifty-four thousand seven hundred and thirty-eight square feet. That's been clarified with the architect. And the total square footage of the building is thirty-seven thousand two oh six square feet. Because it's not a full eighteen thousand square feet per story for three stories. So, um, what that does, it's, uh... It eliminates, um... It eliminates one of our variances for F A R. And it also reduces our parking requirement from two hundred and thirty-five spaces to one hundred and seventy-seven spaces. We're only providing a hundred, so we still need a variance, um, for the, um... For the parking.
Your development coverage stays the same? That didn't change?
Development coverage does not change, correct?
Okay. I see F A R is now within the, uh... The general ones. Okay.
Um, uh, as we advised you last time, the name of the school has staffing needs for about forty-five, um, staff. No more than fifteen to twenty are onsite at any one time. Their hours of operation are eight-thirty to five Monday through Thursday and eight-thirty to twelve-thirty on Friday with no weekends. Students will be bused to the school.
No weekends means no Sunday?
No Saturday, no Sunday school. Um, the students will be bused, it'll be about seven to ten buses in the A M, P M hours. There is no G M L required. In addition to the parking variance that I mentioned, we are gonna need a variance for front yard, um, for the parking. Side setback, um, for the existing structure that single-family dwelling that's there, that's gonna remain. A total side setback from a hundred feet to forty-eight point seven feet. And the development coverage from twenty percent to seventy percent. The board had asked us some questions. The last time we were here for the workshop. One of the issues, the board question was the size of the kitchen. It was around sixteen hundred square foot kitchen. And the question said, why do you need a kitchen so big? Um, the answer is that the kitchen will be used simultaneously, not only for the school lunches, but it'll be also used to give cooking classes for up to sixty girls concurrently with the lunchtime. So they need a big enough space to accommodate both uses at the same time. You also asked about after-school events. Um, all those after-school events were outlined in Ron Reiman's, um, response to, um, the, uh... Review by Nelson and Pope. And if you want, we can go through those. So...
Can you tell me the dates of the original Colliers study?
The original? T I S was June twentieth. And Nelson and Pope's comment letter was dated seven-ten.
Got it.
And then Colliers' response is seven-twenty-eight. And we just got a comment today, which I'll get into. But we're just talking about the after-school activities. So, um, the first thing they do is they have P T A conferences, which are generally held once a year in December, uh, with Eric Body divided into two shifts, either on a Sunday morning or a weeknight. Um, they also have an open house where they welcome potential new students and their mothers, which is also held once a year, generally on a Sunday morning in December or January. The number of participants fluctuate, but the school anticipates seventy-five to eighty mother-daughter combinations on those days. They also have a mothers' get-together, which is generally one Saturday evening in the winter. And they expect about sixty percent of the mothers of the student body attend. Um, and then they have a graduation for staff and families of graduates, which is held on a Sunday evening in June. And they expect approximately one hundred to one hundred and fifty guests, which averages about thirty-three to fifty cars. Um, so for these events, they generally hire chauffeur ream to control parking and, uh, traffic control. So it's, uh... It's organized and it's managed. And they do encourage carpooling on any of these events to limit the number of cars. Um, so those were the after-school events that the board spoke about. And Nelson Pope did review this response letter from Colliers. They were satisfied with all the responses, um, and that there did not particularly be any, uh, impacts because it takes place during off-peak hours when traffic volumes are lower. So, um... That was another... That was one of the other concerns the board had raised. Um, I think the board had also asked us to have a representative of the school. This is Shane Del Braun was going to come. She is here. She is here. So if the board has any questions of, um, Mrs. Braun regarding the operations of the school, she's here to respond to any of those concerns. She's the dean of the school. And we made sure that she was here because the board requested her presence tonight. Um, and I think that's about it. I think I've covered it all. So we're here to answer any other questions of the board and to, um... Respond to what it is.
Okay. Any questions?
Yes. Traffic. Current levels E or F?
The location you're talking about.
Campbell and South Aramont.
Okay. So depending on the hours fluctuates between, you know, normal level source C or D, you can't symbolize. And during the hour that our school would operate, it's more during the peak hours where we will source E or F. But that, again, existing conditions. We do analyze future conditions with appropriate root rates. And then we do the build condition, you know, with already packs on top of it. We try, I read the science about it. Always try to serve the evaluation. Maximize, you know, buses, staff, which still have staff driving at once. But if you go from the existing level service to the build level service to build level service, there's a minor increase in delay as a result of our project.
Are you still in E or F?
Yes. But as far as secret, you can't... It doesn't go to that level where you're impacting intersection and dropping a level service. So it checks all the boxes. We respect the secret that you're not changing the level service. What delay falls within that level where it's not considered significant. That speaks that. That's one of the other comments that the village traffic consultant Nelson Pope commented on that can, the traffic signal is put there, you get a traffic signal warrant. There's enough traffic.
We're not gonna get on the traffic signal, signal on Route fifty-nine.
Right. I don't know what that has speech problem. So it won't be even for the required typical eight hours to warrant traffic signal. The one thing the village wants, remember, you answered the question correctly. Existing conditions, existing levels of service. What the village could do has no impact on our project. Not a result of our project. They can discuss with Lockton Highway to possibly make that into a three-way stop, control this section. Similar to right down the street here.
Which is worse. That's worse.
Except, I'll speak to that. I think you... This is Paul DeCarron?
No. I mean, that's... I'm not open yet.
Right. Exactly. So similar to what was done now, Rockland County Highway Barn did a test case scenario of, uh... Cherry Lane, Christmas Hill Road, Smithville Road. If it was a conventional, um... Two-way stop controlling section on the side road where Cherry Lane was more free flow. So what they would include the intersection, so they put temporary, made it a four-way stop control section. And as a result, it's working better than it was as a two-way intersection. One of those situations where you have one-one-one-one. So the traffic control is a little bit easier.
Makes it better?
Yes.
Better in terms of?
I'm sorry?
The amount of time it takes to get across the intersection?
So for typical on-site intersection, let's just go on this case here. South Aramont Road is a T intersection, right? So you have a side road that's not at least signal control. And you see in our report, that's not uncommon for the side road. Operating at worst level source, lower level source with delays than the main line. It's the nature of free flow versus stop sign control. So the benefit of making it a three-way stop, which was the case down the street here, a four-way stop, is that you have a platoon effect. The park coming down, on the main line, they go, the side road goes, the main line goes. So it's like a one-for-one-for-one, one-for-one-for-one. So overall intersection, you might put a little bit more delays on the main line, but overall, the operation is better.
Is it different on South Aramont?
I'm sorry?
And Campbell?
South Aramont and Campbell?
Oh, yes.
Oh, no, don't put a stop sign over there.
Well, that's up to the board. Again, as far as...
Excuse me, that's up to the village board.
Up to the village, but again...
From your standpoint?
South Aramont is a flowing place.
From my standpoint, we were just looking...
Because they did something like this on the corner of Christmas Hill and, um... South Muncie Road. New County, Muncie.
That's a four-way.
That's a four-way, yeah.
Right, it's only a three-way.
I understand. But he was saying by, uh, Smithville and Christmas Hill.
Yeah, so this is...
Whatever, Jerry Lane. Right. By, up like, run by Christmas Hill and...
Well, I think he's just using it as an example.
No, just an example.
But I'm just surprised that I made it better here because up on South Muncie Road, it's terrible.
Yeah. I'm not promoting one or the other. I'll just say this. From a secret standpoint, our project, and it's been confirmed by your village traffic engineer, that the impact as a result of this project would be not significant. So we wouldn't even be responsible for putting a signal there. We'd be responsible for taking it as a three-way stop sign. That was just an option to give Nelson Pope an option that, you know, they'll never need a warrant for a traffic signal. This is under mitigation that way. If Lockton County Highway deemed this necessary, that's up to them. Not up to you. The village board could pursue that. We're not pursuing that. But as far as the impact of this project at that location, it wouldn't significantly change the level of service with delays at that location. And I'd put it more specifically, the amount of traffic we're adding to that is like less than two percent during that one peak hour. And it's less than typical road traffic.
Where's the school located? Have you ever been there? I had this collision assist on my car. And then the last three months, it went off. Because people just pull out.
Of Campbell?
I've driven out of South Aramont Road.
I appreciate it. I drove the whole way out. Can I tell you a quick story? So the sketchy person who showed up at the last site, I do refer, that was me. So I go to all these sites. I live the sites. I do a lot of my own traffic counts because I would like to know when these, you know, to see the operation in generals. So I'm very familiar with these sections.
So just if you don't mind, just going through the numbers again. You may have mentioned it before, Mr. Bowman. Maybe there's a question for the applicant. Any of the girls drive? So are they allowed to drive to school? So the last month or so of the twelve kids we're here, somewhere. And how many buses?
I believe we analyzed ten. I think the narrative said seven to ten buses. We analyzed ten buses.
And the school's currently in existence somewhere else?
Yes.
And seven to ten buses, that's fine. Seven to ten buses gives... How many buses used now? Seven? How many girls in the school now? Approximately? One fifty? And the projection is it'll go up to around two hundred and not bigger than that? That's... No? So maybe seven to ten buses. And, um... The schedule's almost, we're not staggered, right? All the girls come at the same time and leave at the same time?
Could it be staggered?
Sorry?
Could the arrival and departure be staggered to help with traffic?
Not in our schedule. That we depend on, uh, transportation. Not in our schedule. Not in our timing of schedule. So if we were to transfer the transportation, generally the buses don't all ride at the same time getting to school. We have a window of a half hour. From our timing, so we start once we end, that would not be possible.
The buses generally leave at the same time?
Yes.
In the afternoon? What time is the school day end?
Where's the school located currently?
Eighteen and West Smithville.
Where?
Eighteen and West Smithville, eleven U. And the school, uh, called it.
To where?
To Columbia Road.
That's the school, uh, Rittenman School.
Rittenman School?
Muncie. You're in Muncie? You're in Muncie's school?
Hmm? Oh, Rittenman School. Oh, Rittenman, and where's that one?
I think it's Rittenman.
There are most students from, like, there are Muncie students?
Students are all local, like, they live locally, most of them? No dormitory? Is that what you're asking?
Yeah.
Do a lot of girls miss the bus and need to be driven?
I'm just curious, if there's gonna be a gathering and you have two hundred parents, and even though it's gonna be half, where are you gonna put a hundred cars plus staff members, like, where are they gonna park? When you have gatherings, when you have parent nights?
Bottom court.
I think it listed, um, like, the breakdown approximately how many cars there were, and they were saying, like, a lot of the parents, like, it's like, the mother doesn't have, like, it's not usually one daughter, it was like multiple, so even if there was two hundred girls, it wasn't exactly.
They have forty-five faculty members, and you have, let's say, seventy-five cars, another seventy-five, where are you gonna put those cars? A hundred spaces? They're gonna park at Campbell, they're gonna park on the park.
I'm just jumping something after that, um, the forty-five staff member, I could, you know, the deans here, at no given time, there's more than fifteen to twenty staff at one time, is that correct?
You're talking about like a special function, or during the school day?
Special function.
Yeah, and we outlined, as Paul read, the different events there, that are part of all peak hours, and based on the information invited, the hundred parking spaces should be adequate for, you know, those, you know, events. Which are like twenty-six events during the year, and again, all peak hours.
And it's not, it's not the whole student body.
It's half, we're talking about half, we're talking about two hundred students, I was just curious, like, if something happens, and there is something in the school, there's nowhere to put a car besides on side streets or on Campbell, I don't think it's.
You can't park on Campbell?
No.
Nobody thinks that you're gonna can't park on Campbell?
Don't say nobody. They haven't seen.
They will get hit if they park their car on Campbell.
They block their highways. They block driveways.
So getting back to traffic, we put a house of worship on that road, and another school across the street for a hundred students, what's the level of traffic then? Is it E or F?
It would remain, yeah, there's nothing worse than that, so.
Well, back then, when we just put those in, was it E or F? And what were them?
Fifty-two Campbell. When fifty-two, I don't know if you were involved in that.
I'm looking back now.
When fifty-two Campbell was approved, like, years ago?
I don't know.
I'm looking.
No, I, that wasn't, I was involved.
It's a city, you were, you were?
No, I was not.
Harry. Where's Harry?
You were involved in eighty-three, right?
No. And we did, if I don't want to talk out of turn here, and I don't have that great memory, but we, when we did this report, we did have the two reports, about eighty-three and fifty-one, we included that traffic in our report, and again, the big thing is, I believe, those hours were different than our hours, so that's one of the things, you know, that could be taken into consideration, you know, the different peaking of the different types of house of worships, schools, et cetera.
Does that say morning hours?
Possibly.
What, you're talking about eighty-three Campbell?
The synagogue and.
But we did take those two reports into consideration in our report.
Fifty-two?
The house worship, I thought it was fifty-one.
Fifty-two.
Fifty-two. The address is fifty-two Campbell.
Same side of the street.
I can't find the traffic for that, I'm looking to see if I have.
I don't think they had peak hours of services.
Yeah, I mean, I think that they had, like, their bigger traffic was, like, it varies, like, it's not, it's not the same, but I'm looking at eighty-three.
Okay, eighty was a smaller project.
Eighty is smaller, but it has been, like, cumulative.
And again, we did take consideration of all those projects, hard or no build, so again, both were existing, those accounts, as of today, the day we counted, we're growing, we're growing by growth rate, consistent with Rockland County Highway Department, we'd like to see us at least two percent, and then we included those two other developments in there, so then the existing lines get inflated to a no build condition, and then we're going to top of that. So, yes, that level source E is a product of EF, is a product of existing, no build, and yellow developments, including those two developments, as well as our project.
Well, I'm just wondering if it was E before adding the school.
I don't know what to tell you, because Harry's analysis is a different answer, but, um, his is more conservative.
I'm always more conservative. I'm not saying he's not, I'm just very conservative.
Anybody sign up to speak, isn't it?
Yes, I have two people.
I just want to, how many, how many classrooms do you currently have? And how many kids, how many students per class? You left?
You left your night?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm gonna tell you off, yeah.
I'm trying to figure, how many, how many classrooms do you have currently have? How many students per class? Seven classes, how many, how many students per class?
So you'll be adding one more class, basically, parallel to twelve? No more than two parallel classes? What? On a computer, for example, Muncie, what?
Cause I have one at ten, that's, I'm applying, so.
Oh, so, okay, so that's good.
How many classrooms you have over here?
I didn't count, but, uh, how many are there? What floor is this? Let's see on the plan, what, uh, what floor is this?
The second and first floor.
So the first floor, I mean, are you familiar with, are you familiar with these plans? Cause this has eight classrooms on the first floor, call it, and then has additional classrooms upstairs.
No, that's separate on the plan.
Sorry?
There's separate remedal rooms, there's separate classrooms, there's separate lecture rooms. I'm just trying to forget the number, like, how many students it's gonna be?
Well, we're not doing more than two parallel classes, we just, the student room, it's a, we're, uh, I'm sorry, we break up the two classes for many different subjects, so that means that each class gets divided for many different subjects into two.
So your twenty-four students, say, become twelve and twelve?
Correct, so we need to have a possibility of classroom differences.
So that's the lecture room, sorry?
That would be the lecture rooms, I, I don't, I'm not very familiar with the plans, I, but that would be, that was, that's the, that's the comment on the streets, I mean.
Okay, so just to go back, no more than two classes per grade?
Correct.
You're not having three classes per grade, that's not in the user plan, ever, how many grade? Four grades, nine, ten, eleven and twelve.
The mission of the school is to keep it small, and give as much individual attention to the students, so the class size is a very big inhibitor to that, so that's what we need to keep it small, the school's small, and the class size.
What's the largest size class you have now?
I think it's twenty-five.
So if every class had twenty, I thought you had two hundred, that's the number, two hundred also? So I guess I can ask. What?
And that's the mission of the school.
I'm just curious, what percentage of the students are from Village of Airmont?
Village of Airmont?
Airmont.
I don't know. How would be the percentage, I don't know the exact percentage.
I live from Airmont and Chestnut Ridge. I live from Airmont and Chestnut Ridge.
Yeah, that's him.
Not in Chestnut Ridge, but those are the leadership communities, it's the school, it's all.
It's a church school?
Yeah.
A lot is different.
There's some from Havestown and Luke City, but probably a lot, mostly, probably a lot from Chestnut Ridge. Probably a lot from next to Boston, but. Okay, public comment, is that anyone? Okay, so I'll make the motion, um, to open the public comment section, wherever you put it, most, uh, a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, okay.
We have four people.
Okay.
The first one is Kathleen Brenner. We have three minutes to speak, whoever comes up.
I'm Kathleen Brenner, I'm a twenty-eight Haskell aunt, I apologize for my outburst about the four-way stop, because I am victim of that all the time. So my concerns really are about, really, what everyone's been talking about, traffic, safety, people parking, Clark Park, I live twenty-eight, so if you're familiar with that four-way stop at Haskell, and it's Campbell, right near Haskell, I'm on Haskell's second half road, and the road rage that happens at that four-way stop several times a day, I'm, I'm calling the police all the time when I hear the, the cars crashing, calling the police all the time when I hear the, the road rage, I work from home, so I get to go on mute all the time on, on Zoom while there's a, a ruckus out in the street, and certainly, building a two-hundred-student school in that, in this nearly community, causes me great concern about, you know, just the, the volume of people, the school buses today, people cutting through my street, because my street's a big cut, so we have the nursing home up the road, they cut through my street to get down to fifty-nine, I can only imagine if there's a backup on Airmont and Campbell, that more people are going to be cutting down my street. I'm concerned about kids running across the street, and naturally wanna go to that Clark Park, whether they're little kids or ninth graders, when they're out, or if there's overflow parking, people inevitably are gonna park at Clark Park, and that causes me great concern that people are going to be crossing that street with, without any pedestrian right away or anything like that. I'm concerned about the actual construction itself, how long is it gonna take, what days will we be doing it? I just learned from that family over there about floodlights, totally forgot about floodlights at night, the other school down the street is well lit up, understandably, it needs to have great security, I get that, but, you know, my backyard will be backing up to basically the corner of where this is, so that causes me great concern. The water tables are crazy high, when it rains, you'll be a break, we start to flood at Clark Park and then beyond, I don't have a basement, thank goodness, my neighbors all have basements, but the water tables are so high, how does this construction impact, you know, the, the runoff and the drain? Is there gonna be a generator at this school, is it gonna turn on and do an auto test on the weekends and disturb the beautiful, you know, peace and quiet-ish that we get sometimes? Trash pickup, I've turned into that woman who's calling all the time, the planning board, I mean, the zoning, or the, I don't know, enforcement team here, people don't bring their trash cans in, what's the trash gonna be for this, is this gonna be a big dumpster in the front that we have to look at, that's unsightly in an eyesore? I, I don't know, but that causes me great concern. Oh, and what provisions will be in place to protect the public school buses, school stops that are happening now?
Stop.
Thank you, there are so many school bus stops that are sitting right on Campbell, and I can just imagine, when you add all this additional traffic and, and, and school buses and more cars coming in, that's only gonna create, you know, more backlog, so those are my concerns.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Wong Chen?
I have been resident at forty-eight Campbell Avenue for more than forty-eight years, and during that time, the area's been always been a presidential area. And now you're talking about putting a two-hundred-student school right next to my property, I can imagine what's gonna happen, it's gonna be creating all the traffic congestion on the Campbell Avenue. You know, the Campbell Avenue is the main road between South Amon Road and Route 59, right now, there's a lot of traffic, as it is, now, imagine that you have ten buses leaving at the same time, you can imagine what kind of congestion that's gonna create. And I'm also concerned about that you're putting up a, already, you say that fifty-four thousand square feet building, right next to my property, and the kind of, just, the kind of disturbances it's gonna create, it's, it's just hardly imagined. And we also, we didn't receive any kind of information other than this webpage of description, so we don't know what kind of site plan that you're talking about, and all kind of setbacks that you're talking, you're talking about, and you also talk about all the students gonna be transported by bus, okay, so, and you're gonna have only twenty staff, but you're asking for parking variance of one hundred seventy-seven or two hundred thirty, some parking spaces, and I think that's way too much for that kind of a property. Once you pack all that area, the kind of runoff that you're gonna get from that half of hospital property, is gonna create a big problem for the day, for the neighborhood, so that's, that's why I want to express my objection to the problem of this project, in the strongest term as possible.
Thank you.
Ruth, right?
I, I apologize, I don't have anything more to add, I'm just here for. Okay, so I agree with everything that's been said.
Thanks for doing it.
Anthony, same?
Thanks both of you.
That's it?
That's it.
Okay, so I'll make the motion to close the public comment?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aha.
All right, okay, um, this is Braun, is it? I think it's gonna walk this home. What? Well, I don't know how many would live out there. Yeah, maybe somebody. Okay, um. Just not sure to proceed.
Like, what do they need?
Um, we should refer to the agency, and then figure out the secret stuff. And assuming you wanna reflow the ZVA, right?
I would be lovely.
Reason to work?
We gotta, we gotta get to the, the.
Right, right, I'm just.
I'm not sure with the traffic, how is a bus gonna go in and out from that place?
There isn't, they go around.
No, 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 turning onto the street, I don't know if a bus to get out to the street, they have to block everything, anything to get in, to get out.
Which way they go?
Doesn't matter.
Is there?
I have like the fire truck maneuverability, um, so you could see that, cause the buses are usually similar. So we could show that they could get in, and they can also.
But they have to. They have to get up to the second lane in order to get out?
Um, it looks like with the fire truck, there's like the, it's the tiny bit, so with the fire, with the buses, you should be good, because they're a little bit, they have like a shorter overhang in the back, but, um, I can get a bus carrying plan for the future if you'd like.
You wanna show, you wanna show stacking, you wanna be stacking?
We can show that.
On the traffic, what's the level of service going the other way?
At the four-way stop?
Yeah.
A little source B.
B, yeah.
And that's to the point where, like it or not, when you do like a four-way stop, it's more of a platoon effect, so the side road's not the F, and everything else is, you know, B, C's, et cetera.
As long as people know how to do a four-way stop.
Well, that.
As long as they know how to do a four-way stop, for some reason.
If you look at any people around.
Two weeks ago, I went to their four-way stop, and two people went at the same time, someone pulled out, the other one almost ran into him, saying, what the hell is going on?
I looked at that intersection before it was a four-way stop, and it was worse.
Still nobody, John, you're more people to say, no, please, you first. The guy was in the middle of the intersection, and the other guy almost pulled out me, you know? I'm saying, what is going on here? You first. Yeah.
Okay, so do we need any more information from the, from the Nelson Paul, from Mr. Eman?
I'd like to go back and see what the prior ones were.
Okay.
Just for the.
Okay, so we have to put someone on there, we have to, who does that? Who can get that information for us?
Level of service.
So the level of service that Harry has is not consistent with.
I'm still working on it, right?
The level of service. From Collier.
I just wanna say.
So I, I am not in a place to interpret anything, however, his show a considerable higher level of service, um, I mean, I think in both instances are showing that it doesn't, none of these things are really making it worse, it's just the general growth that's making it worse, from what I'm reading on all the reports, but Harry's is not, it does not match, and I, I'm.
We're gonna be doing on Harry's.
Staying out of, no, I'm not saying which one is, I'm not saying one or the other, I'm not interpreting it, all I'm saying is that both of, all the ones that I see, it seems that it's the, the no build progresses at the same rate, and doesn't seem like any of the improvements or the things that make it worse, it's just the general, overall background growth, I mean, not that they help, but they're not what's putting it over.
Yeah, I would just caution the board to look at, you know, not compare traffic studies, different types of camp, different years, that's all I'll say.
But yours includes.
Yes, I'll do that.
Like, this one includes the other project.
Oh, no, I understand that, but I'm wondering before that, when we did. when we did the house of worship in the school across the street.
I could ask that kind of, John, if you don't mind. So, don't compare it to what he, what was in the previous reports. Two thousand and twenty-five updated traffic counts. Don't put the school there. Don't build anything. Existing conditions, level source EF. So that's the base point you work with. Don't go back and say what was done a year ago, two years ago. Base conditions, right now. I, I would like to say that was all source E F. The three people here would just say, "No way." So, you know, that's what it is. And I know everyone's not understanding cumulative impacts, but from a seeker standpoint, all we do have to compare is the no-build to our build. And if that includes no, all the developments in the no-build, includes hundred other developments in no-build, all, from a seeker standpoint, is what impacts this project's having. So you compare the no-build to the build. Just one more question, I don't see where the garbage is gonna go? Dumpster, or...
Alright, I'll take a look.
Are there any sidewalks?
Um, yeah, we have a sidewalk proposed along the front end.
Into the entire front?
Yeah.
Alright, I'm just gonna see a little line to figure out where.
I know, 'cause they have like the property line, and then the designated street line is set back. So the sidewalk is between the, isn't that straight? I'll see if I can like, maybe shade it or something, um, but it, it is there. I have that.
It is labeled five inches, concrete sidewalk.
That's the best.
I have another question. You mentioned that the kitchen was very large, and they had cooking classes.
That's what the app did, and one of the six-hundred-and-eighty square foot cooking classes. sprung? Can you drill that? The, the, the kitchen is sixteen-hundred square feet, and the response was, "It's that big," because they have cooking classes at the same time, they prepare the lunches for the students. But then the plans also show a, a cooking class, classroom. Does, does that have full cooking facilities in it?
That's just like the...
Cracker.
I don't know.
It's a big kitchen.
So they don't do the actual cooking in the back room? They do the cooking in the kitchen, and it's probably... We might be the same, that knows.
That should be the...
That's fine.
With the yard facility. Party room, no wedding hall.
Yeah, yeah, no catering, we'll, we'll add those things.
Which one do we put on? Tendrilo.
Fourteen, fourteen.
We did on cherry as well?
We did.
The, something.
I know, they weren't happy.
That's where we started.
What happened?
No.
Yeah?
No, we're talking about the... When the push comes to shove, the question is, no, but again, the setbacks is crazy.
Here.
This one, yeah. No one wants a school ten feet from the property line.
In the backyard?
The buffer, yes.
You do it here. With the, with the driveway.
Yeah, there's gonna be trucks, there's gonna be buses, there's gonna be cars.
Okay, so this side side that, okay, but yeah, there you have the building itself.
You have to pull in the back, which is also right of the property line.
Okay, so... We still have to declare associate agency, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so let's do that, yeah?
Mm-hmm.
I'll make the motion that they find words to declare associate agency for the secret review process for the project.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, okay. So... Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, are you comfortable voting on secret time, or should we go next?
Just a point, through a agreement of voting number?
What?
Vote on what? They have to reset this property?
Yes.
Um, if you could, please, you'll think of the voting number, or the case access, please.
Okay, I'll designate Mr. Friedman as the voting number, now let's get to the new one.
Thank you.
Okay.
Congratulations.
You're welcome. Okay, so, um...
For the secret, the question is, if it's a secret, what are they telling that for?
Unless they're waiting for some kind of traffic.
Well, yeah.
And that list is on our part.
That's the question, that's what I'm asking, what are we waiting to see in terms of secret?
On our, um, list of comments, you need something from village engineer planner, they don't have anything on that. And we also have, um, a letter from Palm &amp; Fire that says they're requesting secondary needs of egress be provided from the dining room.
I know the door.
They, they didn't know what to call it. They were calling it a dining room, and I said, "I don't know what to call this," and they were going around, and said, "I don't really read the comments," so...
And what we were just talking about is the fact that the traffic rejections are based on this not being used for, you know, weddings and bar mitzvahs, and, um, similar to the notes that we, uh, we did for them used on a couple of, uh...
So, yeah, usually you put that in the side plan at the end.
Mm-hmm.
Right?
It's a map note on the side plan.
And Mr. Brown, do they plan to use this for what we call outside functions?
No.
No?
No.
And they'll be okay with us putting in a side plan, you won't?
Yes.
We won't push back against, against that? And cancel the pool?
Isn't there a letter from Fusco from June twenty-sixth?
Yes.
Yeah, there's no, I didn't respond to that.
Sure we did.
There was a response.
There was a response letter dated July twenty-eighth that was filed with these revised plans. Oh, we do have it.
This is from June twenty-sixth, is the letter.
And, no, Fusco's first review letter is, is from June, and then Rachel submitted a July twenty-eighth letter responding to...
We haven't, we don't have a response from Fusco since then, but there is on the record a letter from Fusco, so they have done a review.
You gave us a response letter, you did?
Yeah.
We gave it to the village.
Stayed at July twenty-eighth.
It's in with the submission.
With the plans and the SWITH?
Yeah, that's on there.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. Part of the submission.
So on the first Fusco letter, were there any, uh, secret related issues? I don't have, we don't have the letter here, so I don't think so.
Yeah, we've done soil testing, we updated the SWITH based on the soil testing for the drainage. Um, it does, it has a SWITH because it's more than an acre disturbance.
So if these can be, no secret related comments, and it's her response addressed the engineering comments, and they agree to those as, as positions, then I think we've got what we need for secret.
Uh-huh. Okay, so you said there are no secret related...
That, that haven't been touched upon, no. We, we've addressed all of the things that were raised in Fusco memo of June twenty-sixth for secret.
Okay. Okay, and, um...
And like for the fire department, previously they had a comment about the availability of water. We pointed out the plan has a water main extension, a new fire hydrant, so that the water would be further along in Campbell. Right now, it ends kind of at fifty-two Campbell, um, near, near Autumn Court, so this would be an extension.
Okay, so going back just to Nelson Bell, the comment number five, about the signal warrant analysis. So they wanted a signal warrant analysis, and you got back to them, and they said the intersection should still be evaluated for all ways of control.
Correct.
What, what happens then? What was, so, what's your response to that?
That's the only one.
The village's job?
If the village thinks that that would improve the state, if the village thinks that would improve the intersection, again, it's not necessarily because of an impact of us. If the village thinks that would improve the intersection, then they would reach out to Rockland County Highway, see if they would be willing to, you know, make that a...
Uh-huh, so the signal warrant analysis is something you could actually do?
No, no, I'm sorry, we did a signal warrant analysis.
That you did?
Yes, yes.
But the convergence of all ways of control, that's up to the village already.
Right, so the signal warrant analysis, you put all the numbers in, you go to the MTC standards, and...
That's the end of it?
Yes, and is there enough volume out there over eight-hour periods of warrant signal? I think John already called the fire department, I'll see. Um, we just put a thing out there that if this is an issue with the town, the village, except for Rockland County Highway Department, that not because of us, but existing conditions, that improving could be a little bit traffic signal, a three-way stop. Not necessarily recommending that. Some cases, as the board mentioned, Rachel, who grew up around this area, sometimes you get that level of service, sometimes it might not work to wait some of the mornings. But on paper, all way controls intersection should operate better than, you know, having a side road being uncontrolled, because they have no, they have the way for gas and this, that, and the other. But again, it has nothing to do with our impact standards. But have you considered how bad south terminus is gonna get if there, if there's no flow anymore, if it's a stop sign? Yeah, I, like I said, I wouldn't necessarily recommend that, it was just an option to put out there to address the fact that how would you fix the existing no-build and build level of service out there that has...
Wasn't even his idea, it was, it was Austin Berry's idea.
The only thing that could help is maybe a turning back on Campbell. John's actually... A right.
Yeah, so if you need a right turn.
Only problem is, sometimes you can't make it because you can't see it to the left. It's not protocol to have on a side road two for uncertain intersections. It's not typical to have two lanes exiting uncertain intersection. It causes more problems where you lose sightlines. So somebody making that right turn, they don't see, because there's a car accident. So deal two...
If you have a light, then you, you might have that.
I'm sorry?
If there'd be a light, you might have it.
Exactly, exactly. You just don't add it.
Thank you so much for that traffic.
Do you have to come anymore?
What?
Do you have to come anymore if you've got no traffic, so...
Um, okay, so, sounds like the secret concerns have been addressed.
Well, I guess if, under traffic, if we have to use the build versus no-build in the current numbers, no. But if I looked at what happened last year...
Yeah, I don't understand that comment, John. What comparing it to last year?
Well, let's say last year, before we put in the school, hundred students, house of worship, fifty parking spots.
Oh, oh, no, I understand.
Well, I think what he was saying is like, that's your current condition, because they're not built yet. So when he, when you, then he does his current counts, those things aren't included.
Right, now they are.
They're not.
So existing conditions...
When he does his actual counts, they're not, because they haven't been built yet.
So right now, don't improve any, anything in the area, the level of service like EF during peak hours. Not putting another car on the road like. Putting the other two projects that are along, um, Campbell Avenue, you know, the other studies, that continues to make the, increase the delays, but remains in that level source EF. So now that's your base point. Now, when you add our traffic for this school, it still remains within that EF with not... So it's not gonna go any further, right? That's why. No, but it's all delay risk, delay, you know, based on delays. So it might stay at a level source F, doesn't get any further, but the delays start increasing. But I mean, secret standards, if you don't make intersection worse, it's not considering impact. But it's gonna, it is gonna make it worse. That's a full ourselves, if we put in... Understood. Huh?
Doesn't change the level of service.
But it's not changing.
If it delays everything by one second, your whole category doesn't change.
I mean, when, when you get to peak hours, and you have seven buses and forty-five cars of, of, of teachers, and you have parents coming in, you're bringing the... Understood.
It doesn't make it from an E to an F.
It is in between E and F.
Right, it'll make it a little worse.
Because this, this is about twenty-four cars, adding only twenty-four cars. You're gonna have more than twenty-four cars coming every single morning. If you calculate your buses, your teachers, and the parents, and, and whatever... Food delivery trucks, garbages. You're talking about peak hours, or on the, school hours? Those are peak hours. Everything comes at a peak hour. You're talking about more than twenty-four in general, right? We assume ten school buses entering, and ten school buses exiting. Okay. And then the twenty, the fifteen, twenty staff that are coming during that peak morning hour, and the twenty staff, the fifteen, twenty staff that's leaving during that PM hour. So you're at thirty already? Yes. And, and before a truck, a garbage truck, anything else, a parent, a parent, before a parent drops over a kid, because they missed a bus, or whatever it is. And this is only twenty-four cars that you added to the traffic report? I'm sorry? This is only twenty-four cars that you added, that this school's gonna be...
There's fifteen to twenty in the morning, and fifteen to twenty in the afternoon. They're not coming and going at the same peak, because they come, they park, because they're teachers. The buses come and leave, but a car or a teacher comes and parks to teach.
I understand that, but how many, how many cars have you added that this project is gonna bring us to this street? Is it twenty-four? I can tell you the exact numbers. That's why I... So again, I'd like to point out... It's anticipated to add an additional twenty-four trips during the peak hours, AM and PM. Is that correct? Okay, so in the morning, at Campbell and South Emerald Road, we're in nine, fifteen, twenty-one, twenty-four, yes. Twenty-four. But you're gonna have more than twenty-four. This school adds more than twenty-four in peak hours. Some of the traffic's from the west, so coming from the west, we have coming through Campbell, Pascal, and Crabmere, we have sixteen. So it's distributed from east and west. So twenty-four, sixteen, I'm sorry? I'm just, I'm just curious, how do you assume that it's gonna come from the west? Well, discussions with, you know, the schools representative, from their population centers, we go by zip codes, et cetera, and we say X amount of percent is coming from the west, coming from fifty-nine, coming from the west, and X amount of traffic is coming from the east. I don't think they're coming, any, anyone comes from that side. We have a general idea of where it comes from. It's not coming from the west, mostly based on, based on how I know this grid. Yeah, they're all coming from one side. They're all from Tuxedo. I'm sorry? They're coming from Tuxedo.
Well, anyone that came from like Stony, there was mention of Stony Corner, Haverstraw, they'd be coming down two-oh-two, they come through that intersection, and the other way, they come through that path, but like, so it...
Yeah, I could, I could use a lot of more details, Rachel, but also based on travel times.
Yeah, there's different things.
I understand, but it's gonna be more than that. We know that, right? Twenty-four is... I don't know how we know that. I'll go down and look at the school, how many, how many buses you have, how many trucks you have, how many cars you have. And we counted all the school buses. The existing school. I'm sorry, sir? How much you actually have on the school day?
I'm just saying about seven now.
Seven, I believe.
Seven buses.
How many taxis show up, how many parents drop all the kids, so what the actual count is.
And again, no one is, probably no one is gonna walk to this ground. Versus right now, maybe, maybe you have some that's walking, because it's one city in a city.
We're more concerned with the peak hours, that's where you can earn your backup, so that's all.
What, what constitutes peak hours?
Peak hours is, yeah, a total traffic study would be peak hour would occur between seven o'clock and nine o'clock in the morning, that's when most commuters go to work. And the evening typically falls between four and six, that's when you have the highest then. Our study not only takes into the peak hours, but also the operation of the school. So we look at what the peak hour on the roadway is between that seven to nine o'clock period, and the four to six o'clock period, and where the school fits in, I think, I can remember the court. The dismissal time is five-thirty, so we analyze the critical hour of five to six o'clock, and the morning...
Eight-thirty.
Eight-thirty, so we analyze the critical time period of eight o'clock to nine o'clock. And that's where you gotta be careful comparing it to maybe a different study, because we're site-specific. It's a school with specific arrival and specific departure times. So, we could, we could analyze maybe the seven o'clock to eight o'clock period, and that then a level of service, but that would not be the peak that we would occur at with the school operating times. And I can just, for whatever you know that, I already have a note now. This is all reviewed by, you know, village traffic consultant, and based on the projections, narrowed, et cetera, our analysis, their conclusion was, it wouldn't have a significant impact based on the operation of school. Doesn't mean it's not going to affect the area roadways, it doesn't mean that even have, you know, some of the sections having a little bit more delays, but again, we follow, you guys follow, state Rockland County Highway Department follows secret... we follow, you guys follow, state Rockin County Highway Department calls secret standards where there's a definition of what an impact is.
I'm just concerned that the, it didn't take calculation, everyone is gonna get to this building. That's all. There, because there's enough, there's enough, how many teachers per classroom? Just let's make the pure calculation. How many teachers per classroom?
I'm understanding something is 15 to 20 staff that will arrive during the peak hour within that hour period when the school buses are, the school peak hours. So we counted for during those hours. This is not a two hour analysis, a five hour analysis that, you know, oh, there's 45 teachers, yeah, but not coming in all the same time based on.
How many teachers comes in at the same time? Like you have eight to 10 classrooms, right?
15 to 20.
So it's 20, most probably, right?
I'm sorry?
It's, it's probably 20 because you have 10 classrooms, you're gonna have two per class, right? And you have your middle teachers, you have a chef for the kitchen, you have a manager, a janitor. It's not calculated, everything in. We have, we have much more traffic that's gonna be done.
You're assuming those numbers. You're making them up.
Yeah.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not making this.
You are.
Are you gonna have someone in the, you're gonna have someone in the kitchen, right?
Our staffing requirement, but they may not come in at eight, eight thirty in the morning.
Within the same period of time.
They call an hour before.
Right, but potentially.
Is it for, for the expansion as well? The sweeping expansion of 200?
Yeah, these numbers are all based on the school 200. It's not based on 150. It's based on the 200. It's both of them. I got one air from Hudson here.
I know, I still sleep that.
Okay, do you want more information or, or say, what do you, what, anyone to this?
What else you gonna say?
So we have the, we have the Nelson Pope report there that are on board with this, so. We did this last time with the, that guy on 59. What? No, the tiny little office building.
Two thirty three.
Remember that?
Two thirty three.
Two thirty three. Dragged him for a few months. You what? I never came back.
Do we have an option of a no bill?
Huh?
Do we have an option in no bill?
What do you mean?
I have a reason.
There is, here is the reason. I just, on paper, it sounds good, but I know the street. I passed the street at least 10 times.
I think we're good.
Okay, so you ready to vote a vote? Yeah? Okay, so I'll make the motion to vote for the, to issue the major declaration pursuant to the secret process for this applicant. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. You go, everyone?
I think it's gonna be a very big impact on the labor.
So just, so.
I would no one.
Okay, so Suzanne, it was four to one, yes. Mr. Blauer voted no.
And Mr. Blauer was.
He voted no. Okay, and so we should send it to the Z B A.
Yep.
So I'll make the motion to send, to refer this applicant to the zoning board. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. You voted no? You voted no, once she won. Okay.
Well, did you vote no for the referral?
I mean, I.
I thought you said yes to the referral.
I don't know what it is, but.
No, the first vote, he voted no.
I voted no and then I got a deck, so it's not, I'm not going any further with it, so.
Oh, you don't wanna say, okay.
No.
So can you wait a minute?
Yeah, let's wait for him to go back. And then while we're waiting for him, when would you wanna come back here?
Yeah, January.
Um, I guess we would pick October also.
That was the 21st, a Tuesday.
We get to the Z B A?
October.
Well, let's see, let's see if you get referred there first.
Well, we, we technically, we don't need a referral.
No, no.
I know it's your practice to do it and we.
As long as you have the neg debt.
As long as we have the.
They have the neg debt. They don't need a referral from us to the Z B A.
No, it's not mandatory.
Dead on the agenda.
Okay.
The deadline is September 4th.
September 4th for the October.
October 16th. It's the third Thursday because of the holidays.
For 10, 16, 17.
For 10, 9 for November 13th.
Okay, so we're gonna wait a second, yes?
For 10, 9 for 11.
What?
13. So I would say, Mr. Chairman, we probably wanna come back in November.
What, what's the date? I'm sorry, I missed that. The date in November is what? Suzanne, what's the date of the November?
The November planning board meeting is Tuesday, November 18th.
What's Tuesday?
It's a Thanksgiving.
It's, he said 18th. We need you.
We held everything, we don't.
Okay, we go, we go, we go to the Z B A. Okay, they, they, they don't really need to report to the Z B A, but it's.
It's not made a motion.
Some protocol, so we'll do it. So I'll make the motion to refer them to the zoning board. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, three to, three to, three to two, right?
Three to two?
We go anyway, yeah. We voted yes, Israel and Pinterest voted no, but, uh.
Yeah.
Mr. Ball, they don't need us any for that. Uh, and I'll make the motion to adjourn the public hearing for Sheriff's Department to the Tuesday, November 18th, planning board meeting. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, definitely unanimously?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so we'll see you in November.
Thank you. Good night, everybody.
Good night, everybody. Good night. And. Walmart. Is anyone here for Walmart? Who's at Walmart? Are you here for Walmart?
I'm hiding behind the door. Come on up.
So I'll make, this, this is actually a public hearing, Mr. Noel?
I just wanted to point out, I couldn't get a date for December between consultants and the board, so I don't know how we're gonna handle December.
Okay, if there's no meeting, there's no meeting.
Cause Hanukkah's early, Christmas is later, and then I couldn't get the confessionals, so.
Okay.
We might not.
Fine. Okay.
Okay, welcome to the world.
Yes, okay, so I'll make, I'll make the motion, let's say, let's make this official. I'll make the motion to open the public hearing for Walmart.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So what are you gonna say? You just need to sign. Signs.
Yes, we'd like to replace the existing signage.
Can you guys go outside, please? Ms. Rachel.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, Ms. Reese, if you don't mind, just take it into the hallway. The hallway, please. Thank you. Thank you, someone.
I'm Maria Rotundo.
And your company?
With Light Bright Signs. Yes, it's.
Light and bright.
Named Dr. Blackman.
I remember that game with the little.
Yeah, the little pens.
Okay, so, so good. Okay, so, um.
There's no one that signed.
No one signed. Okay, so we'll try to make this very quick, uh, just in, you know, very, very brief footnotes. What are you trying to do here?
Okay, so we want to replace the existing signage. Currently, there is Walmart letters with a yellow spark. We're gonna remove those and replace with six foot letters, white, that just say Walmart. Then we wanna remove the existing pharmacy letters and replace with new two foot letters, non-illuminated.
I hope pharmacy were taken down.
Yeah, we play, taking down, replacing, just plastic, non-illuminated letters for that.
So they're currently illuminated, the pharmacy?
No.
So it's staying non-illuminated.
I didn't even notice. Is this pharmacy on the outside? I didn't even notice that.
Well, you didn't notice it because I think they're like one foot letters and you can't see.
We now all notice them.
Yeah, and then, um, you know, the 911 numbers, I mean, I don't think that matters. You know, the, their address, 250, but we're replacing that. Um, and then we're replacing the pickup letters. Those are illuminated.
Those always were, or?
Yes. And then the banners off our scope. That was gonna be attached to a light pole just to help direct.
The banners? Oh, sorry?
Yeah, that, that's on my list, um, to you guys, where we were gonna put up a banner on the light pole. We're not doing that anymore.
That's when it came off?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so you're, okay.
The existing square footage is 305.8.
Yeah, I see that.
And the new is 258.7, which is good. They're a little smaller.
Okay. Okay, anybody have any issues with this?
No.
Um, anything in the G M L that should interest us?
The, the one thing that's of concern, which you pointed out, is that they're saying that the sign, the variances will be required from these standards. Uh, but if it's a replacement of an existing sign, I question that because we do, Suzanne located, um, two prior G M Ls on this.
I didn't put it in your.
One from 2003 and one from 2012. And, um, you know, these were done in connection with prior approvals. So these signs were previously approved through whatever process existed at the time.
So we should override comment one?
I would recommend that you do that because it's a G M L letter and it would require an override, um, because they're saying it requires variances. And I think based upon the documentation, although we don't have resolutions of approval, this same project and this specific sign went through an approval process in 2003 and 2012.
I could dig them up if you need me to.
What do you say, this specific sign? You mean?
I'm saying, which is, what's currently there on the building and the sign is replacing it, albeit slightly smaller, is the same location and the same.
So they wouldn't need the variance?
I don't think so.
So why they?
If this is a sign plan, then the, then the building inspector can approve, so it's gotta go to the planning.
We're gonna be changing. This is the change.
When they, when we did by the.
The high?
The high, you mentioned that they don't go to the zoning board of appeals for it. They need a variance, they come here.
Close to the planning board.
So come, so we're not actually.
We have to issue a variance. Your approval of their sign.
Right, so there's no, there's no need for, so they're wrong on the need for a variance. You never really need a variance.
That's what I.
Right, that's what you're trying to say.
They don't care.
Yeah, it means the G M L said they would need a variance, but they are not in the village of Vermont.
Okay, so if there's nothing else, I'm ready for a vote. Mr. Noel, can we just go ahead and vote on this?
Sure.
Yeah, sorry, questions?
Lou, you're okay with it? Everything's good? All right, just wanna make sure. So you've got an application dated June 11th, 2025, accompanied by the letter from Ms. Rotundo of Light Bright Signs and a short form environmental, not identifying any impacts, dated June 11th, 2025. G M L letter dated August 7th, 2025, and you would need to address, um, what I'm suggesting would be an override on the, um, comment number one. You have a memo from the A R C committee approving it dated, uh, August 17th, 2025.
And for the record, I did send it to the D O T that's listed in the G M L, but I didn't get a comment on any of the extract to.
And that's, I believe, all the existing documentation on it.
Okay. So can we do, we roll the site, the signage, the sign plan approval and the override into one motion?
Um, why don't you make a separate vote on it, uh, just so we have a record of that?
So do the override first?
They do separately. I would do the override first.
Okay. You got a good news?
Yep.
Okay, I'll make the motion to override G M L comment number one on the, uh, G M L letter dated August 7th, 2025.
And again, the reason for that is because it erroneously states that.
That is, right, so required. You know, that's the rationale. Hey, very good, thank you.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, okay, motion passes five zero, I think. And then, um, I'll make the motion to approve the proposed sign plan for Walmart, 250 to 59. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That was Mr. Blauer? Okay, very good.
Usually when you have to ask, it's me.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right, let's go.
Okay, any, any, any new business?
Not like another.
They're smaller. We usually approve that.
Um, Suzanne, any, any new business?
Um, no, other than we, we don't have a date for December because it's hard between the holidays and everybody's, um, timeline.
Listen, if there's no, if there's no meeting, I'm gonna complain, but, but, listen, I guess we'll try.
I don't have anything new.
Okay.
Well, the only thing is there is one project that'll be coming. They're in C D R C and they're going into September for the athletic facility to be a suite with a dormitory. And they were required to put in sidewalks on this side, so.
Okay.
Um, that'll be coming.
Is this a new requirement on every application?
They weren't even allowed to apply for a building permit until they put in sidewalks.
Oh, that's the way it's going, going forward?
On the property and they needed a slight change to that covenant. All of that will be in your practice when we, when we get to that point.
So you can't issue a building permit unless they.
On this one, because they modified the covenant and made it part of the, the presentation.
But in general.
So the sidewalks come first or the agreement?
Before they get a building.
Oh, really?
In general, all safety things should come before.
I agree.
Not the last thing.
Yes.
Well, the ones on the house will go right there again. Sidewalks were even months ago.
Oh, nice.
Okay, we don't wanna ruin with the trucks going in and out of construction. Is that a concern?
They, they still have a road cut. They still, you know, the sidewalks, they still have a road cut.
All right, the obituary on the feed.
Where's the sidewalk?
My house one. It's all the way around the circle.
Oh, yeah? Goes onto a net also?
It does. It circles around when that.
So they did nice job with that building.
Yeah, they did. They were actually paving tonight, so they're marking lots in and they put the curb in it.
Looks like a nice house, by the way.
Big six thousand. Okay, so if there's nothing new, I will make the motion to adjourn tonight's public planning board meeting. I'll second. All in favor? Like, we have to figure out this traffic business. We're gonna have to come to some kind of agreement or something. It's coming up.